Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting to order for January 26, 2022. The time is now 7:01. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anything on our opening ceremonies is our role called councilor as well as the clerk to call the role, please.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Brocksmith?
Here.
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Volst?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have items A, B, and C. It's regular council meeting minutes, payroll checks, where transfer banknotes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say a no. Loshay Carey, thank you. Under reports tonight, we have three committee reports. We'll start out with Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services, and that's Councilmember Mary Hudson.
Thank you, Mary. We started our meeting tonight here at 6 o'clock. First item for business was approval of our meeting minutes from October 22nd. 27th, we haven't met for a while, so we were doing budget, and that's the excuse, and it's the true one. So we're back. Our first item was from our finance director, Doug Valeski. We talked at length about the Library Commons project, had a good update, talked about project sequencing and some funding models. It was a very in-depth conversation. I just want the public to know that we will be talking about the library project for quite a while. This meeting is open to the public. Our committee meeting is open to the public. You're always welcome to attend, so you can really hear all the nuts and bolts about what we're talking about in this meeting. The next item on Doug's plate was talking about a couple of our agenda request items tonight, consulting services agreement and agreement with the Skagit watershed council regarding this Friday's Illuminate, which looks like it's going to be a really nice evening, so it should be nicely attended. So I hope you all have a chance to come down there to the movement up from the waterfront. And then we talked about the 2022 sales tax. Mount Vernon's sales tax did go up from 8.7 to 8.8 due to the House Bill 1590 Affordable Housing Sales and Use Tax. So just as a note to yourself, remember that the sales tax did go up in the city. Next up was Jennifer Burner, Parks and Enrichment Services Director. Couple of highlights from her presentation. Edgewater Park Playground is closed right now. They're installing some new playground surface material because after the flood event, they went in and noticed that there was some damage that they needed to take care of. So they'll be closed for a little while, but just know that we're trying to make it safe for everybody to use. Again, the Illuminate event this Friday. And then we talked some about the Kiwanis Salmon BBQ Lodge Rental up at Hillcrest Park. They are coming back this year. We're very excited about that. They've been, haven't been able to hold it for a couple of years. They're only going to be doing serving salmon, no Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but it will be for five weekends. So that's the good news about it. So we talked a little bit about the rental fee for Hillcrest Park Lodge, because although they're only there Fridays, this is Saturday and Sunday, we can't use the lodge for really pretty much anything else for that whole time. So we were discussing that. Also talked about the park code updates. We're making some changes, and we'll be talking to the director about some updates to the park code, hours of operation, abandoned vehicles, lots of little things that we just need to tighten up. She will be talking to us either in pairs or individually over the next couple of weeks, and then we will all come back and make a decision on how we want to proceed. Miscellaneous for the good of the order. There was nothing on the plate, so we adjourned at 6:56 PM.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Next up is Development Services Committee report, and that's Councilmember Melissa Bean.
Thank you, Mary. Development Services Committee met last Wednesday night in the room next door.
Multi-purpose room.
Multi-purpose room. We continued a discussion on our solid waste study that the city has undertaken. The cost to provide service is increasing, and so the city is doing its due diligence to take a look at that. So the city consultant, Chris Bell, provided an update on that, taking into consideration council member comments from our previous presentation. We then requested, again, a four-year, or in addition to, a four-year and a five-year rate comparison that includes the following factors: a senior discount, a 17% fund balance, which is a standard healthy balance, at four and at five years, and then the commercial rates and the residential rates at 65 and 95 gallon to remain constant. So this additional information will be presented at the next Public Works Committee meeting, which is on February 9. And just as a reminder, Councilmember Hudson is correct, all of our committee meetings are open to the public, and I would encourage you to attend every Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. Next up, we talked about the growth management legislative authorities in our docket review. Rebecca Lowell provided us with an overview of the GMA and the process. And possible docket items will be discussed in the next two Development Services Committee meetings, and then we'll pass that vote by the end of March. And then we continued on with our housing element discussion. I facilitated a discussion as it relates to this year and next year on our housing action plan. Our discussion centered on commercial and residential economic growth, and their impacts on property and sales tax revenue, the BERC Economic Study Update and its impact on economic development that includes mixed-use development opportunities and in the growing and growing the urban core area, which is Riverside Drive, College Way, nonprofit organizations, and the impact on affordable housing, a pre-development grant funding program available through Skagit County, updating our sign code, our clearing ordinance, and taking a look at our design standards and also the downtown design review board and functions. We are also exploring horizontal and vertical mixed-use code updates. And at our next meeting, Don Couch will continue facilitating our initiatives to take a look at for the coming next year, this year. And with that, we adjourned at 8:01.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is our Public Safety Committee report. Councilmember Mark Post.
Good evening. The Public Safety Committee met on November 3, 2021. I hear from the police department about a new program that would enhance service delivery in both the police and fire departments. Chief Kamik opened the presentation pointing back to the legislation presented, presentation that he provided in June, and how changes intended to narrow the authority and scope of policing met the need for integrity, innovation, and evolving how police services are delivered. Council was then introduced to the five-member group within the police department who conducted the research that recommends expanding the current single embedded social worker function into an integrated outreach service model based on the nationally-recognized law enforcement assisted division program. We learned that LEED started in Seattle and is an evidence-based program that provides care coordination plans for individuals who commit low-level offenses related to substance use or mental disorders or extreme poverty. Studies show that participants are 58% less likely to be arrested again after those enrollments. This research identified that 6,000 of departments' calls are to substance abuse or behavioral health causes rather than criminal intent. That's for the city of Mount Vernon. And these could be more effectively handled by social workers than law enforcement. Chief Kamik described the integrated outreach service team that would expand outreach capacities by adding embedded social workers who possess specialties, specialists in chemically-pediatric, mental health, and case management services. Model is designed to provide first responder functions to these types of 911 calls by social workers instead of patrol officers. Council then heard from Chief Bryce or Fire Chief and Fire Department Nurse Morgan Hendrickson, Hendricks, that a component of the integrated outreach service team would include a nurse practitioner. This position would provide needed field medicine services to the iOS team half the time, and the other half would be directed towards the community medical program, where the service practitioner would conduct home visits to high utilizers of 911 services. In 2020, the fire department responded to almost 900 calls related to substance abuse or mental health, and 50% didn't require any kind of ambulance transport work. The goal is to address high users before it becomes an imminent reduction and hopefully to reduce future 911 calls. We also had a Public Safety Committee meeting on December 1, where Chief Bryce gave us an update on improvements that are going to be done to Stations 2 and 3, kind of just brought us current with process, how things are going off the bid. And then we turned it into a Parks and Enrichment Services meeting after that. And really, what we discussed was some of the new policies that are going into effect, some rules that are going to be taking place in the Parks Department. There's different programs. There's memorial bench and tree programs. Sometimes people will make a donation in memory of somebody. We're looking at how those donations will be received and, excuse me, kind of managed. We discussed the park banner and street banner process, special events. Excuse me. We also discussed the field usage and some rental rates. And some of this has been adopted as far as rental rates. Some of the policies will be adopted by council at a future date. So those are the two minutes I have.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. And I'm hoping our mics got sorted out. I think they were a little hot, but I'm thinking they're okay now. Our TV 10 folks are sitting in the back, so we'll keep going unless we hear we're not supposed to and they need to fix something. All right. Item B is community comments, and this is a time where we've got two items here. First up is the review of emails that may have been sent in by the public in the last time since we met, and I'll introduce Peter Donovan to read those emails for the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council. You had just three emails since our last meeting from the public, and we will read those here, as these folks were hoping to be heard without being necessarily in person. So the first email is from Larry Patricia Hilliard, and they write, "Dear City Council Members, thank you for joining our neighboring communities, LaConner and Cedar Woolley, in passing a resolution to keep fully-contained communities out of our beautiful valley. Thank you for listening to your constituents and protecting our farmlands and rural areas." The next email is from Marilyn Miller, who wrote, "Thank you so much for your response to my message regarding FCCs, both individually and in your unanimous support for good stewardship and your responsibilities for the well-being of Skagit County. I hope the commissioners will honor their stewardship of the county in the same manner. Sincerely, Marilyn Miller." And finally, from Mary Ruth Holder, "Thank you all so much for voting in favor of this important resolution. On Wednesday night, city staff did an excellent job of presenting the item, organizing and summarizing the comments, and keeping the public informed about the agenda. I am very proud of my city." And that is all of the written comments.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Next up is item two, is our public comments. If there's anyone that would like to speak, you're welcome to step to the podium. If you could, please state your name, city of residence, and comment around three minutes or so.
Hi, my name is Barbara Nidus. I'm from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance. I'm currently here in Skagit County for this purpose of, for the November, that happened November 13th to the 15th of the flooding and mudslides. So I'm here specifically for that reason. So we offer low-interest government loans for businesses of all sizes, homeowners, renters, as well as nonprofit organizations. Also, that includes places of worship, because a lot of people don't know that as well. So we, as for the homeowners, we offer up to $2 million, offer up to $200,000, and that's including $40,000 of personal property. And for renters, we offer $40,000 personal property as well. That's only for your primary residence. It does not include secondary homes or anything like a second car or anything like that, but your primary car, that's what includes for the personal property. As far as the business, it's up to $2 million, and it includes basically just physical damage. That's one part of it. And we also offer the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. So anybody that was, has suffered economic losses during that time and then were closed, they can get up to $2 million and have that option and help stay in business. And for nonprofit organizations, we offer up to $2 million as well. The interest rates are 1.43%, is the homeowners. For businesses, 2.83%, as low as 2.83%. And for nonprofits, it's 1.87%, as low as that. And we also have, the deadline is March 7. That's why we're here. We're trying to push that out. We opened with FEMA, so you register for FEMA first, and then you get referred to us. That's how the process works. And we offer that privilege. At least if you do, if you do get rejected from our loan, you do get referred back to FEMA. So that's why we do suggest apply and see what your options are and make sure, you know, get that assistance that is needed. We have a disaster recovery center. It is at 802 Ball Street. It's at the Cedar Woolley Library, where it suggests it's 9:00 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then noon to 6:00 PM. Second, we can also apply online at disasterloanassistance.sba.gov. And also, we have a customer service number at 1-800-659-2955. Is there any other questions that you think? But so when you do go to the centers, you can, if you already applied online, you can ask for status. And, you know, if any type of error or something happened, then you feel that, you know, some mistakes on the computer, some people make mistakes when you do the application process, they can now assist you there. And also, they can also bring, you can also bring your paperwork there and also apply on there if you have that guidance. That's 101.
Barbara, how long will the disaster center be open in Cedar Woolley?
Cedar Woolley, they said it's till February 18, but it could be extended.
Okay.
So for now, it's open, so there's no really deadline on that part. It's up to FEMA. FEMA makes the decision. We work with them.
Okay. We'll make sure that we have this information if folks call into the city so that we can pass it along as well, and then we'll place it on our TV 10 scrolling information so that we'll try and push that out too for anyone who may need it.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is there any questions from council?
No, good.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
All right. Seeing no other public comments tonight, we'll go ahead and move along. Item C is any council member comments. Councilmember comments tonight. Okay. We'll move along to mayor's report. Just a couple of things. Congresswoman Susan Del Benny, who's our first congressional district congressman that represents the city of Mount Vernon, and Congressman Rick Larson hosted a press conference yesterday along the dike in front of the Skagit River Bridge. They asked if Mayor Sexton and I would like to come by, and so we both did, and we're pleased to just greet our congress members and talk about infrastructure. So they were there to really highlight the bipartisan infrastructure law that went into effect last November. This is funding that's already been allocated by Congress and signed into law by the president, and they're working to get that funding distributed over the next five years out to states and cities just like us in Mount Vernon. Washington State is expected to receive about $8.8 billion over the next five years. And you can find information on the details of where all that funding would be allocated to, but a few of the highlights that I think make sense for our public to know is that $4.7 billion is coming to repair and rebuild highways in Washington State. There's $605 million to replace and repair bridges. And those of you who have joined me in hoping that our West Mount Vernon Bridge could be on that list of maintenance and repair, we're hoping. We don't know yet, but we're talking with WashDOT to find out how they're planning to do long-awaited repair and maintenance over the next five years. So if we learn more, we're going to make sure that our public knows that as well. And in addition, $71 million to support the expansion of EV, electric vehicle charging network. So that's coming specifically to our state. Some of the things that I think are really important to know for our public is all levels of government are really needed to work in cooperation in order to get infrastructure built. And Mount Vernon stands ready, and we're pleased to be a strong partner with a proven track record of building infrastructure with partnerships. Our flood project is just one of those. This was kind of mentioned a few weeks ago, or in November when we had our flooding. But also, the interchange at I-5, that was a partnership with the state of Washington and also federal partners to do those projects that are meaningful to our community. So we are ready to be a strong partner, and we're ready to receive federal grants for our Mount Vernon Library Commons project. We made sure that our congress folks knew that, and I think they're eager to get some of that funding to us as well. So more to come. If anyone would like to learn more about the bipartisan infrastructure bill, you can go and visit our congress members' website, so delbenny.wa.gov or larson.house.gov. Did I say that right? Delbenny.house.gov, right, okay. Or really, you could even just Google the infrastructure bill. So we want to thank them for spending a little bit of time with us in the really freezing cold yesterday afternoon. Just a reminder too, there's a mayor's e-message, an e-newsletter that comes out once a month, and you can sign up for that on our city website, mountverninwaa.gov. So you'll get some information that's going on in the city every month. You can sign up for library project updates. You can sign up for Parks and Enrichment Services information. It's just a great tool where you can sign up and have the information delivered right to you that you're interested in. And then lastly, on behalf of Councilmember Brocksmith and the city, we wanted to make sure folks knew about our Illuminate that's coming up. It's the eighth year in a row that we, well, actually, it's the eighth year we've been able to host Illuminate. We had a little pause there for COVID. It is a free family event, and the original intent when we wanted to do an event in January was what could we do in the darkness of January that could be a great place to gather, something together. So it has a wonderful sponsorship and organization through the Skagit Watershed Council, so we're thrilled to have them take the lead on this, and lots of different partners, including our downtown and businesses like TriD Arts, Arts Washington Grants, things like that. There's going to be Friday, this Friday, 5:30 to 8:00 at the Riverwalk Plaza. The LaVenture Marimba Ensemble will be playing at 5:30, and if you haven't just been filled with just happiness, you got to hear that marimba band. It's really cool. Then the Illuminate Band will play afterwards. There'll be unveiling of new luminary art to the public, and there'll also be poetry from Skagit Poetry Foundation and a scavenger hunt. So bundle up, calm down, be inspired, and gather with your community safely outdoors for Illuminate. And Councilmember Brocksmith, is there anything else that I missed that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Great. We'll hope to see people then. All right. Item E is committee agenda requests. Any committee agenda requests? All right, moving on. We have no unfinished business. We're going to start with our new business. Item A is a Community Action of Skagit County annual update, and I have Peter Donovan will present this item. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again to you, council. Maybe we could have that marimba band play walk-up music as we come up?
Yeah.
We can talk about that. The mission of community action is stated that they try to foster and advocate for self-sufficiency among low-income folks in Skagit County, and their vision is that everyone in Skagit County has the opportunity to be safe and to be healthy and to be successful. And I could go on and tell you more about them, but instead of that, we've invited Executive Director Bill Hinkle here to talk with you and to give council an update and to give the city an update on what community action has been up to in Mount Vernon for the last year. So I will welcome Bill Hinkle.
Oh, my gosh. I saw it. I did that.
Thank you. Should I keep on my mask?
You're welcome to take it off. I think it's easier for folks to enjoy if they're at home watching. So thanks, Bill.
Any questions?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Mayor Boudreau, Mount Vernon Council. Great to be here. It's been a while since I've been up here with you all. Bill Hinkle, Executive Director, Community Action, Skagit County. Always have to start by recognizing, well, first of all, Illuminate sounds awesome. I shall be there. And Richard Brocksmith is our current board president, and I don't know how many jobs he has, but he's got a lot of them, and he burns midnight oil for us, you all, his own organization. And I think there's a few kids in his life, too. And Mary and Melissa and Mayor Boudreau have done service on our board, which is appreciated. It's been a bit of time. Mary did fundraising. And Iris, of course, all of her hats she wears, one of many is working with us, and we're thrilled to have her. She, I don't know if you know when she's on our payroll, or she's just doing her own stuff, or she's with the school district, or she, she just gets up in the morning and does great things. And so we're proud to be able to be associated with her and others. Thanks for many things, many partnerships. One of them is the eviction prevention. I know Kathleen Morton, our housing manager, was here. I can't remember. It was the night of the BERC report. It's been a few months, so I know you had some feedback on that. But it was great to partner on that effort for sure. And obviously, the CDBG pass-through that we use for our family shelter, and I could go on and on. A little, you know, we, it's been a couple of years, but we used to come and do these presentations yearly because you're partners and supporters, and good to try to get back on top of that. Peter read our mission. Thank you very much. If you didn't know, we're kind of spread out around the county. We've got our main office over by Riverside Health Club, but we're also in Burlington Concrete, Cedar Woolley with our food distribution center, and we're even out on NAS Widbee, and in Anacortes with our WIC program. So we're kind of spread around. But where do our clients live? Most of them are in Mount Vernon. I believe that's about 46% of our clients. Last year that we captured in our database, that was 4,623 unique individuals from the city of Mount Vernon. I won't, I will not go over this busy diagram, but I'll pull out a few of our impacts. You'll see right in the top left, some reference to the eviction prevention. 476 households avoided eviction. 204 obtained safe, affordable housing, and 87 were gotten into some shelter. The middle one, and you might look at two, about, just a little over, 9 million pounds of food went through our food distribution center. And that goes out through the emergency food network, all the food banks. And before COVID, that was, I would, it's somewhere around 4 million pounds per year, four and a half million pounds per year. So that's a pretty good indication of how COVID has impacted local hunger and nutrition needs of families in our community. That's a heck of a lot of food going out. We're proud of our team out there, and really, the teamwork of all the food banks and hot meal programs working together on that. And there's another, a number of other items on there if you have a chance to look at it. I think it's a lead behind. This too references the Food Distribution Center. What this is a snapshot of is per month, how many households are being fed through the network, food that's coming through the Food Distribution Center. And you can see, obviously, in the cold months, things peak, and this is all during COVID. So a lot of people getting fed, fortunately, and a lot of partnerships out there in the world to do that. In Mount Vernon, a few things to know about the folks that we're serving that are coming through our doors. There's, you can see the race and ethnicity, including just under 50% are Hispanic or Latino. And 27% of our Mount Vernon clients were homeless, almost half rented. The age range, the people who need some assistance, 29% are 13 or under, and seniors 60 and over, 16%. So that's about 40. So that's about 45% of our clientele who are either seniors or kids. And the employment sta, about 18% were disabled, and the employment status, 52% of the folks that we were assisting were not in the workforce. Now, they might be disabled, they might be seniors, they might be kids, they might be caregivers, and then you can see the employed and non-employed, non-employed. The Mount Vernon folks that we saw were primarily very, very low income, 0 to 30% of the area median income. And there's a little chart that you can see what that means. For a family of four, that's a maximum of about, earning about $26,000 per year. Those were the, mainly the folks we're seeing that were your residents. And you can see if you had that income to afford the average one-bedroom rent, if you were single, that'd be about 89% of your income going into housing, and if you were a family of four, 64%. So it's quite a burden. I know you all know these facts, and I'm pretty sure you all know this too, and thank you, Melissa, for updating tonight. I'm always interested, all the activities that you all have, but the University of Washington has a Center for Real Estate Research, and they do this quarterly report, if you don't know about it, you can pop online and find it. Unfortunately, the last two rounds, Skagit has had the lowest vacancy in the state of any county. And you can see in their survey, they found 11 vacancies out of what was that, 1,166 that they surveyed in Skagit. And I'm, I don't want to speak for anyone in this room, but I would say that we're all unified in not wanting to be in the bottom of that list, and again, thank you all for the serious effort that you've put into trying to address that. It's, I think, I'm part of the chamber board now. It was interesting, they had a roundtable of all the businesses, what are the issues that you're facing, and to a business that was, my workforce can't find an affordable place to live, it was either that or workforce issues, there was childcare was in there as well, it was a big issue. So I know you all know that, we know it, we've been, I know, talking about it for a long time, and then we do a lot of services. Where we've strategically gone for the last couple of years, we've been chewing on this, and again, Richard has been an absolute leader in this, is to step into developing housing ourselves, affordable housing. And so we are learning and trying to figure out the niche that's going to be most helpful. And the way to do it, we hope, that can crank out the most quality affordable units in the shortest amount of time, and it's tricky business, as you know, but we're trying. So our first pilot project, this is a picture of it, this is over in Burlington, and on the ground floor, some of you have visited, Skagit, that's connected on the ground floor, as well as our energy assistance program. And it's right across from Asia One, and then if you go across the street, that's the shopping mall, and we're calling this Cascade Landing. And the project here is, we think, somewhat creative, we hope, in that, first of all, it's a partnership between a nonprofit and a private developer, and there's very little money, well, relatively little money that we've had to raise compared to the millions and millions you usually have to raise for these projects. It's basically cash flowing by a relatively modest rate of return for the private investor. And it's in a facility that was an underutilized commercial office space, which is fairly easy to transition into residential units. So we're taking the second floor and turning those into 34 to 35 apartment homes that are meant to be affordable to people earning 60% of the area median income. And it's underway, and we hope to have it completed, the private developer working on it, will complete it by, we hope, early to midsummer. So it's pretty quick, and we're hoping to be able to maintain it as affordable for as long as we live, and hopefully, our children live too. So it's kind of a cut our teeth project on it, and right now, we're, so you know, we're looking at some parcels in Mount Vernon with the hope that we can, it might not be this exact model, but that we can do some creative things in your community. We would love that if it was in partnership with the city, so that you can help us figure out where is the best location for it, in a way that fits with the community, in a way that can add value to the community. And we want to, if we can build our capacity and our partnerships, we want, again, to play a substantial role in the catch-up of the 3,000 units shy that we are for what we need to house people who work here in Skagit County. And, you know, I'll just say that, thank you on 1590, that is a tool, a powerful tool, one of, there's many challenges that lead to us being at that 9% vacancy rate. One is it's a beautiful place to be and live and work, people want to come here. But one is that it takes a lot of risk to do feasibility, especially since sites, there's not a ton of sites out there, and then to get site control. So I just want to suggest that one opportunity, either with us or with a sister organization or private developers, if it's for affordable housing, is to partner to help us get past that risk point, so we can keep things moving, and hopefully, again, knock on wood, be a real part of the solution. So thank you, that's what we wanted to share tonight, appreciate the time. If we have time, mayor, I'm happy to take questions, or if you need to move on.
Sure, if there's any questions for Bill. Okay, great, that's it. Well, we thank you for coming, and glad that we're back in person where we could get an update.
Yep, I appreciate it, thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Item B tonight is the approval of an agreement with Dowell Consulting, P L L C, and I'll have Doug Valesky, our finance director, make his way up for this particular item. Doug.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. Staff recommends council approval of a consulting master services agreement with Dowell Consulting. Before council tonight is a master services agreement with Dowell Consulting. The contract is used for help in financial preparation, review, and consultation for the city's financial statements and other general accounting processes as needed. This is a renewal of an ongoing contract that the city has with Andrea Dowell. Andrea's expertise is most helpful, and has been a major contributor to the city's financial statements and audit. So staff is requesting that council authorize a mayor to enter into a consulting master services agreement with Dowell Consulting.
Any questions for Doug on this item?
I do, let council authorize the mayor to enter into the consulting agreement with Dowell Consulting.
All right. Motion by Mark, and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Item C tonight is the approval of an agreement with Skagit Watershed Council, and again, Doug Valesky is here to present.
Thank you. During the 2022 budget process, the Skagit Watershed Council applied and was awarded $1,500 from the Tourism Promotion Fund. Per RCW, council member Brock Smith has a remote interest in the agreement as an employee of Skagit Watershed Council. A remote interest still allows council to approve the contract following the procedures set forth in statute. Pursuant to RCW 42.23.040, the agreement must be approved by the council after council member Brock Smith discloses the extent of his interest, which shall be noted in the minutes and abstains from the vote of the agreement. So staff is requesting that council authorize a mayor to enter into an agreement with Skagit Watershed Council for the receipt of the 2022 lodging tax funds.
I think that's my cue in that I'll be recusing myself from this decision because I do have a remote interest, working for the Skagit Watershed Council, but having a fixed wage, so at the pleasure of the council, I'll recuse myself.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Doug on this particular item before we call for a vote? All right.
I'll move that we authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with the Skagit Watershed Council for the receipt of 2022 lodging tax funds.
One second.
Second.
Thank you, so a motion by Mary, and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and one exemption, one abstention. All right, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our regularly scheduled agenda items. I'll ask our city attorney if there's a need for an executive session tonight.
Yes, mayor, there is. The city council will now meet an executive session for a period of 45 minutes to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease from public knowledge regarding such consideration, would cause a likelihood of decreased price. In addition to discussions legal council matters relating to enforcement actions, litigation, or potential litigation, to which the city of the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party with public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in either adverse legal or adverse financial consequence to the city, and moreover, to discuss issues related to collective bargaining sessions and planning or adopting strategy or positions related to collective bargaining, which is exempt from the Open Public Meetings Act. Again, 45 minutes, and council is not expected to take final action following the executive session.
All right, with that, then we'll be adjourned into executive session at 7:43.